I call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Madam Chair, can we do a little call please? Director Burden?
Here.
Director Pitzel?
Here.
Director Madar? Director Proctor?
Here.
Director Berger?
Here.
Director Wannes?
Here.
Director Garcia?
Here.
Thank you. Now would everybody please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Item 4, Public Comments. At this time, the Board will note comments on any agenda item. If any person wishes to be heard, he or she shall stand, address the Board, identify himself, and state the subject for comment. Time limit for each speaker is three minutes. If a speaker wishes to speak on multiple items, the speaker will get four minutes across total across all items. A total of 15 minutes shall be allocated for each item for all members of the public. The Board may find it necessary to limit the total amount allowable for all public comments on items not occurring on the agenda at any one meeting to one hour. Do we have anybody here for public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ron Ruben, and I'm from Raleigh. And I've come to you today to continue our dialogue from last week, or last couple weeks ago, and from October, that I feel that you're coming along, and I pray that your road doesn't get too bumpy, that you're successful, because that's what you're here for, and that's what we all want for our health system. And believe me, I mean even PMH wants you to be successful, now more than ever. So, but I come to you today to bring up again going forward with management out of San Diego, UC San Diego Healthcare, the pitfalls. And tonight, I'm here to offer you possibly some information that might be helpful in background for what they've done to El Centro. And you've heard rumors, I've heard rumors, those rumors are true, in my opinion, that they bankrupted on purpose, you know, El Centro Hospital. They had a plan, and ever since they started working for El Centro, there hasn't been any control put on them. And nobody is there at their board meetings that really pays attention, that does anything. They're all nice people, don't get me wrong. They're not bad people, they just don't do their homework. And you know, from the little bit you've been working on hospital business, it can get pretty deep, and takes time to learn. And unfortunately, some people, they're more in it to serve the public, but only when it comes to glad handing, not to actually studying the issues. If I ask you to go back and review John Grass's evaluation of UCSD Health and their part in San Diego, and I'm offering to set up a meeting for a couple of you, or more, depending on the time that you have, with an insider that has real knowledge of the hospital's operations, financial and otherwise, at the beginning when UC San Diego took over, and for a couple of years after that. And I'd be happy to set that up. And again, we all pray for your success, and anything we can do to help, we would like to be there for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 5.
I'm wondering.
Oh, yeah. Do I have to go first?
I can finish.
Yeah.
Just because the folks on Zoom can hear, it's my stuff.
We're not that scary, are we?
Hi, my name is Maribel. ECRMC sent out a memo to their employees today. On the last part, it states that the city of El Centro is going to sell ECRMC to the IVHD. It had been mentioned to us that you guys were already at the negative. So how will you guys be purchasing? The other thing it states here is that I hope that these negotiations conclude with ECRMC joining IVHD. What happens if they don't? And with these negotiations, what are you guys doing to not bring their negative, so that the North End Committee don't have to pay for this?
So, okay, so.
Let me, yeah, let me jump in one quick second. So I wrote down what I believe are your questions, but we also are going to have an opportunity for a Q and A under Item 5D. So typically during public comment, the Board does not engage in a back and forth with folks, it's just an opportunity for the public to comment, and then there's no discussion. So I invite you to just remind us about your questions during Item 5D, and then the Board can engage in what we're calling a three-minute Q and A at that time.
Okay.
Sorry, I want to make you come back up. Let me make sure I have your questions, so that you can come back up, or I can reiterate your questions for you.
Okay.
So it sounds like the question is, where are you going to get the money to buy ECRMC? How are you going to take on their negative debt? And then what was the second question?
What happens if they don't decide to join?
Okay. Great. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you all. Do we have any other public comments?
So now we'll move on to Item 5A, Approval and Resolution, of Resolution 2025-01, Resolution of Imperial Valley Healthcare District Board of Directors Assuming and Accepting the Rights, Responsibilities, and Obligations of the Pioneer Memorial Healthcare District.
I'll take this one, Madam Chair. I'll try to make sure and speak up for the folks on Zoom, because I know I don't have a mic close to me, but this is a resolution, pretty self-explanatory, reiterating the statute, 8918.
Excuse me, is there copies of the resolutions available for the public?
Yes. They're also on the website, they're attached to the agenda, but there should be copies.
Should you have the present to the public, the city?
I couldn't find them attached to the agenda when I looked.
I just have copies of the agenda.
Oh, you don't have public interaction?
Just the binder, like we always do.
Oh, the Agenda Packet though?
The Agenda Packet's on the website. I have the agendas here, and then the Agenda Packet's in the binder.
Okay, so there's copies of the resolution available on the Agenda Binder for the public inspection?
Can I take the whole binder?
No, but you can have copies, right? We can send them to you, or I can email them to you after the meeting?
To me, the problem is, I don't find them when I see the agenda. I go to the end of that, and there's nothing to click to go see something else.
So if you go on the IVHD website, which I'm on right now, I'm just going to show you, and you go to IV-HD.org, there's a link here that says "Special Meeting." You click on it, the agenda pops up, you scroll down, and there it is, right after the agenda.
It hasn't been there for me.
Okay.
With all due respect, ma'am, you might be complying with the law, but as a meeting like this, it's the first one, it might be improved to have these documents available for the public. That's all the point I'm making.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comments?
So what this resolution does is reiterates the language of the statute, transferring to IVHD, which was effective on Tuesday, which is when the dissolution took place, all of the assets, rights, and responsibilities of Pioneer Memorial Healthcare District. And even though frankly, the IVHD Board doesn't really have a choice, but we're saying that the IVHD hereby accepts the assets, rights, and responsibilities as its own. As of the effective date of dissolution, IVHD has and hereby accepts ownership, possession, and control of all books, records, papers, offices, equipment, supplies, monies, funds, appropriations, licenses, permits, entitlements, agreements, contracts, claims, judgments, land, and other assets and property, real or personal, owned or leased by, or in connection with the administration of, or held for the benefit or use of Pioneer Memorial Healthcare District, accounts payable, and all other contractual obligations, including tax revenue, grants, or any other revenue or money, shall be transferred to IVHD. And Section 3 sets forth this Board's agreement to accept and adopt all PMHD policies, Board bylaws, operational policies as its own, except to the extent that any policies or bylaws conflict with a policy or bylaw that's already been accepted by the IVHD Board of Directors, of which there are very few. The Board intentionally did not adopt a ton of policies, because we knew that the dissolution was on the horizon, and we didn't want too many conflicts. We're also accepting and adopting the Pioneer Memorial Healthcare District Med Staff Bylaws, and establishing IVHD's Chief Executive Officer as the CEO who controls the hospital. The Section 6 directs the CEO and legal counsel, myself, to execute, create, send the necessary administrative paperwork in order to effect the transfer of assets, so that, you know, if we need to show folks anything, Chris or myself could have authority by the Board to do that without having to come back for sort of administrative approvals. And then it gives the IVHD Board Chair, Board Treasurer, and the CEO or his delegates, as may be appropriate, the authority to be authorized banking signatories to effect the transfer, the opening, or the closing of any financial accounts from PMHD to IVHD. This would have been effective, this establishes the effective date of the dissolution and succession as January 21st. Even though the LAFCO resolution dissolving PMH makes the dissolution effective October 24th, in light of the Superior Court's stay of that dissolution, and then the termination of the stay effective January 21st, this would be effective with the dissolution date of January 21st. So that's the basis of the resolution, and the best recommendation is to approve.
Do we have any public comments? If so, please stop.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Journeigan, I live in Imperial. It's the first time I've had the opportunity to read this. I have a question on the first page, Section 2, the last two words, including tax revenues. My understanding, the taxing authority, citizens of Raleigh for this district, were passed, and that was the authority to collect the taxes. Once a dissolution of PMH happened, which has already happened, the taxing authority died with that also. My question is, by what authority do you contend to collect the tax revenues?
So LAFCO has the.
Because I'm waiting, excuse me, I think 218 was signing on the revenues, as a matter of fact, this board, 918, excuse me, this board was charged with developing a tax proposal under 218 to send out to the community to vote on.
That's correct. There is the recommendation, there is the requirement for this board to recommend a funding mechanism to the voters before December of 2026. And the LAFCO resolution, and LAFCO is the entity, we've been in communication with them, that will work with the county and the county tax assessor to transfer tax revenues from what otherwise would have been PMHD to IVHD, because of course, we still have a hospital to run.
So that, absolutely, so up until, I understand what you just said, ma'am, up until the 21st of January, all the taxes that have been collected, you can hand it over, because those are the tax collector, but you can't collect any more taxes after January 21st?
My understanding is we can.
By what authority?
Well, I'm not here to give you a legal brief. There's a bunch of laws that authorize it, and it really goes through LAFCO, so you can ask the LAFCO Board.
Absolutely, but I don't want it to be, because I'm not smart enough to do that. But my point is, 218 requires a special vote to tax. When the Pioneer Memorial Hospital Special District was dissolved, that was the taxing authority. LAFCO doesn't have the legal authority to impose a tax.
That was much like the property, the hospital, contracts that exist, employment agreements that exist, just because the healthcare district was dissolved, doesn't mean any of the other stuff associated with it goes away. And that is essentially what 8918 tries to establish.
That's not my question. My question is specific to tax revenues.
So that's going to be a better question for the LAFCO Board? So when we were doing this, this is actually a question that we had when we dissolved Heffernan, and then obviously coming up with PMH, we asked them, do the tax revenues stop, or do they continue? And they said, no, they stay with the district, because the way 8918 is, you take every revenue stream with them, including the taxes, and so you don't get to pick and choose which revenues you get them off.
This is why it's important to pass a tax measure, a countywide tax measure, because once that, it is our, we anticipate it will be the recommendation of this board, to pass the countywide tax measure, and in doing so, rescinding and having the new tax measure supersede the current tax measures that are in place within Colexico and Raleigh, so that Colexico and Raleigh are not the only two towns supporting the hospital with their tax revenue. So those will then get wiped out and replaced by the new tax.
I did not disagree with anything you said, or what you said, Kate. My point is, all the legislative acts, 918 and everything, are absent, specific to tax revenues. And people just can't assume that you can continue to tax people without an authority. And that's why I said, as of the 21st, the authority to tax these people went away.
Yeah. I disagree with you, and I think that you can find authority in the Cortez-Nox-Gurzburger Act, which gives LAFCO the authority to direct tax revenue in the event of the dissolution and succession.
Certainly, we certainly have the right to disagree, right to agree to disagree, but I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like, I can give you the executive director of LAFCO's contact information for questions you may have here.
I'm sorry?
I can give you the contact information for the executive director of LAFCO, because that's really the governing board that makes that determination.
So if LAFCO, excuse me, if LAFCO says, "We can't tax people," or my assumption is correct, then we're back to the same question that I had?
No, so LAFCO already made their legal determination that everything resolves, or continues to the district.
We just had a call with them last week, actually.
Is you telling me, when I go to the LAFCO Board, that LAFCO has said that you can continue to collect tax revenues in Raleigh?
Yes, and in Colexico. So we've been continuing, we've been continuing receiving those tax dollars from Colexico as well, and they're already ongoing, and so same with PMHD.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
And just for the public record, the way those revenues are paid out is different county to county. It's not like we get, you know, a check every two weeks from the county, or, you know, because of the way property taxes are assessed.
You've collected two, three times a year when the property taxes are paid.
Well, but we don't get, because it's done through the county, usually it's on something called the Tener Plan, and the county pays us.
That's great.
After they get the taxes, so the timing of the payments is different county to county.
They make three payments to the district.
So, yeah, so we'll, you know, we have to figure out our timing with the county with respect to receipt of that fine.
So with that, do we have a motion?
Make a motion, don't move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Valdez, and a second by Proctor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, no. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to Item B, Approval of Pioneer Memorial Hospital's Contract Renewal with Toshiba America Medical Systems, Canon for Repair and Preventive Maintenance Coverage for Acronon, 64 Slice Scanner. Oh, you don't get it, huh? Yeah, please, if you can present the item.
Credit is more achievable than coverage. So this is the contract for the Toshiba currently, the CT scanner that we have is, we're replacing it, so it's about a one to two-year project that we're working on, sorry, I'm moving there. So we need this for the maintenance of the current one. It has gone down a couple of times, and so we want to make sure that we're protected.
Do we have any questions to report?
Yeah, I do. How, how, this camera, how old does this stand?
I'm not sure the current amount of years, but I can get that for you, at least over 15 years.
I think it's 2000.
It was bought refurbished. It was bought refurbished, and it's about 15 years.
And since I've been overseeing radiology in the last six months, it's gone down twice.
Would be more cost effective down the road to think about replacing it?
We are, we are. We currently have a contract out there, we purchased a new CT scanner, we're working with ATI on the remodeling of the current one. And it'll be about a year or two, two years to get there.
So then when the new one comes in, we can have this one as a backup?
No, we do have a second backup outside. We have one inside. Though we will have to bring in a trainer once this one.
Do we have any other questions from the Board? Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I have moved to approve the renewal of the contract.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Berger, and a second by Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. And then we can move on to Item C, Status of Dissolution of Pioneer Memorial Hospital District and PMH/IVHD Integration.
So I think so far, it's actually gone very well. The team has done a phenomenal job, just continuing to do what they do, which is take care of people. Had opportunity with many of the executive team to go around and then speak with many of the staff members, and ask them questions about things that they have concerns about. I'll go ahead and give you guys a couple of those, that you're kind of aware of, some of the questions that have come up in the conversations that we've had. So a couple of the concerns, the bigger ones that have come up multiple times, have been with regards to ECRMC and that acquisition, and what that looks like. If that, when that happens, will they have to go to El Centro and work? Is one of the questions that has come up quite a bit. And just so that you guys know, the answer that we've told everybody on that is, kind of look at it like it's like different departments, right? You're hired for one area, so even though we might have two of the same clinics, it's kind of like your clinic, like we have a clinic in Colexico, and we have clinics here in Raleigh, and that's where you're hired for. But when we need help, we'll call down there and say, hey, you guys have anybody that can help us out? We need some extra help over here. And if somebody volunteers and says, yes, we'll do it, then they do it. If not, then they don't. And that would be the same thing. If you want to go over to Colexico, or go over to El Centro, you'll have the opportunity to do so, people from El Centro will have the opportunity to come over here when that time comes as well. However, there will be those moments when, in some of those cases, we may have a clinic that is, you know, these two clinics don't make sense to be open together, so we'll consolidate them to one clinic, and we'll look at the data to determine whether that clinic stays in Raleigh, or whether it stays in El Centro. And if you want to stay with that clinic, and that clinic moves, then you'd have to go to that clinic there, you'd have to do that. Otherwise, you know, everybody else is pretty much going to be in the same spots that they are, and we won't see much of that that would really take place. The other questions that have come up have also been with regards to El Centro, and where we're at with that process. So we did let them know that we are in the negotiation process. We've had several iterations of that, of that offer, that have gone back and forth, and also that, per the terms that we had put forth before, that was released to the public, that the offer that we have, the big one is to buy it for a dollar. So kind of an answer to your question as well, I wonder where she ran off to, oh, there you are, it's a dollar. The acquisition price is a dollar. But with that, there are obviously other pieces to that, where we want the city of El Centro to have skin in the game, and it's not just going to be a simple transaction, because literally, if they did want, or if we would just take it, right now, they would give us the keys and they would run. And so we wouldn't have a problem from that standpoint of bringing them in, but we want to make sure we do our due diligence, and make sure that there's skin in the game for the city of El Centro through that process, and so we're going to work that with them, and continue to work that process. And we do have our last offer that we have given to them. We're waiting to hear back where they stand on that offer, and where we go from there. So it's in their court right now, and we're just waiting to hear back. We did hear that they spoke about it at their last meeting, so we're hopeful that we can anticipate some sort of answer from them here soon, and be able to continue that process moving that forward. Some of the other questions that came up had to do if, about the name, and specifically if there's, if we're still going to be able to wear our Pioneer's gear, and I assured them that we are. There's no talk of changing the name at this point, we've got a good name, we're going to keep it and use it. There's a lot of history there, and we want to make sure we preserve that history. And so continue to wear Pioneer's gear and do that. So that was another big one that came up. And then, you know, there are a few other one-offs from here, you know, that talked specifically, as we talked to maybe different clinics, they were curious about, you know, what that's going to be like with the other clinic that's there, and how we would move forward there. There were some questions about the tax, and some ideas that were brought up, that I'll share with you as well, that, you know, that some of the folks that we talked to said that they would prefer that we would put it out as a sales tax and not a property tax. And so there are some things like that, that, you know, like I said, we've got a really, really smart group of people that we have that are part of our team, and so they were throwing out solutions, and not just, you know, questions and concerns. So it was great to be, to hear that and be a part of that. Overall, you know, some of them were curious about when that merger happens with El Centro, what does that look like? So in answer to that question, we basically told them the same kind of thing, that we're in the midst of the negotiation, once the negotiations are final, we sign on the dotted line, we go into escrow, we're talking about 30, or excuse me, three months, six months, give or take a few months, that we sit in escrow. And then after that, we still kind of exist as two separate entities that are in the process of folding together, right? So will be some opportunities there. Some things are going to be very organic in the timeframe that takes place, and the example that I give on that are things like benefits. We have a very definitive timeframe that benefits start and benefits end. We have a very definitive timeframe that benefits start and benefits end. We share that same timeframe with El Centro. That timeframe does actually happen to be July 1st. And so if things play out with this and it's a six-month escrow time, then obviously there, and, and just with the timing, the way it works now, there is no way that we would end up on the same benefits when they came in because we wouldn't be able to make that happen in July. So most likely what will play out is it'll be the following July because that's a very organic timeframe and it's a very, like we have hard stops on those things. And so it makes it easy for us to plan and do those things like that. In the way of pay, you know, we, we have a different pay scale for both sides. And so part of that process would be us taking the, the pay scale and matching those up so that it's the same at both locations, making sure that our benefits are the same at both locations, taking our policy and procedures and making sure that those are the same at both locations so that people have the opportunity, again, as we spoke before, to be able to, if we need help over here, somebody from El Centro could come over here and just pick right up because our policies are the same, everything's set up that way. And so that would be the idea on, on, on that. And from there, you know, there were questions about, you know, their jobs and they were worried about their jobs. I did explain to them that as far as our frontline staff is concerned, we, we need more frontline staff at this point. You can look at our openings on the website, you can see there's a lot of openings right now. Hopefully through coming together, I always give the example of, you know, if we have in case management, for example, we have three openings, they have seven openings. When we come together and we have some consolidated efforts and we're able to streamline some things, we're together, that those openings go from seven to four maybe, or three or something like that. And that's what we're looking for in, in getting some of those efficiencies and being able to help the staff out from that standpoint. As you go further up the chain, the totem pole, if you will, then the likelihood that changes can happen are definitely much higher, or myself included. I'm not immune to that either because it's going to depend on what the board decides to do with regards to potentially bringing in a management company, not bringing in a management company and those type of things. And, and so I explained that to them as well. Some people also had concerns about UCSD and then coming in because of some of the things that they had seen and heard about UCSD before. I explained to them that, that, that's, there's, there's nothing set in stone at this point in time on any of those items. The board is in the process of reviewing and looking at a JPA that was submitted by UCSD to see if those, the terms within there are favorable for what the board would like to do. And that no decisions have been made at this time. They could do that. They could go with a different management company. They could go with no management company altogether. And the same question was kind of asked about our affiliation as well. Were we going to maintain our affiliation with Scripps? And I said, all of those things will be looked at and then tried to decide what's going to make the best, the most sense for this new district and what that means. So same thing, a couple of the questions that they had had to do with our, whether or not our accreditation will still remain with DMV or if we'll go to the joint commission or if something changes altogether. And that's pretty much what I told the same thing there. You know, we'll review all the options at that time and see what's going to make the most sense for the district. It could be to stay with DMV, it could be to stay with the, with joint commission, it could be to go with somebody else altogether, different altogether. And we'll make those decisions as we come to that and kind of give the board the opportunity to weigh the pros and cons of both of those or all the different options that are available at that time. But those are, those are potential things that you could see changes on and things that could change. Staff were pretty receptive to most of that and really appreciated that we went around and had those conversations. We're still going to continue to have those conversations. It's only been a couple of days, so it's not like we can hit everybody up. So we're going to still continue to go around and have more conversations and answer questions as they come. But really for, you know, something that's, that's fresh and three days old, I can't, I cannot say enough about the team and the work that they're doing and how they're performing and, and how they're, you know, just doing what they do best, which is take care of people. Even despite some of the concerns that they have, they do their job and they do it well. So that would be my report. If you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Did they ask anything about potentially becoming a union?
Oh, yes. Yes, 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 thank you. There, there was, there was quite a bit. So the union did come up because some questions were like, do, do we have to become a union because they're a union? And, and I explained to them that at this time, that's not the case. If they want a union, they're more than welcome to. That's on them. That's not something that we do that's controlled by the employees. And, and that's part of the issues with how some of the delicate balance that we have to, to figure out as far as how we can share employees as well because one side is union and the other side is not. So there'll be some conversation that we'll have to have through that process. But that, that was asked in notes, that was the first that we gave them. They want a union, that's on them and they have every right to do that if they want to. Thank you.
There's an error in the agenda. D should not be D. A and B, subsection B should be A and B to C.
Yeah.
So we can just start taking A and B.
We have the FAQ.
Yes. Chris, do you have the FAQs that we had circulated or do you want to talk about those? I think that really is sort of, yeah.
I'm seeing like that was.
That was what, yeah, Chris kind of went over. And we can jump into the Q and A session for our PMH staff. And I'll start with the questions that were asked earlier, Madam Sheriff. That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'll take first crack at your questions. Chris correctly answered the first one, which is, how are we going to pay money? And I, I don't recall exactly how you positioned it. I think you said we don't have money right now or something. So we do have funds from the Heffernan dissolution that are earmarked in the bill for the consolidation effort and for the startup. And the terms that the board finalized on November 5th for the acquisition of ECMC include a purchase price of $1 and include payment by the city of El Centro to IVHD or things like closing costs and, you know, a few other items that you can find on the offer, which is, which is available online. With respect to the question about how to take on negative debt, I assume you're talking about the bond obligations. Currently, the bond obligations of ECRMC are funded by the operations of ECRMC. And while this board will at some point have to figure out sort of the strategic plan for the next five years on how to hopefully consolidate the two hospitals, there's nothing in the terms of the offer that would change the bond obligation from being funded by the hospital's revenues. So that shouldn't change. What will happen if they don't decide to join us? We hope that doesn't happen and the board can speak for itself on that. But we are very, we've been working very hard, I would say, six to seven days a week on trying to get to a, to get, get the deal across the finish line. And so we're not really, I mean, at some point, this board will have to consider what happens if we can't get to a deal. But for now, we're very focused on getting the deal done. But, you know, so that's, that's what I can say is we're not really focusing on what's going to happen if we don't get ECRMC. We're trying to figure out how to finalize, how to finalize the paperwork for acquiring ECRMC.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can tell you, I've thought, that question keeps me up at night, right? What happens if we don't acquire ECRMC? You know, if we're being completely honest, I just had a conversation with their mayor and let him know, hey, are we going to do a deal or not? If not, let me know so we can have our staff start focusing on what happens if that doesn't, if this doesn't go through, you know? And so I think, you know, like anything, whether it's a merger or not, you know, like I said, we're very hopeful we get this merger. There's going to be a lot of strategic planning that's going on throughout this to make sure that this healthcare district is successful. And I don't know if anybody else has had anything. With that, do we have any other comments?
And we just, when, will you update us at your next regular meeting on what terms you're at?
I wish I could. There's actually a non-disclosure agreement that we all signed. And so, like I said, I've told this to so many people, I wish I could tell you what the terms are right now, but we did sign a non-disclosure agreement. We were required by law to put out terms that were approved on November 5th. I mean, I hopeful, I'm very hopeful that our next meeting, we can tell you what the terms are, that means they're finalized, right?
So basically, we have no input into what you're doing.
Essentially, yeah. I mean.
You're not, it's not very transparent when, you know, there's these millions of dollars in debt that the county, us, all of us, including you guys, are going to have to pay tax on. And we haven't even, in, in my opinion, you keep pushing out the, the election to solve the term problem to pay the bonds.
No, sir. I trust me, I understand your frustration. If it would have been up to me and we would have had all the data and everything we needed, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about putting us on the ballot. This would have been done, you know, we would already went on this past November ballot. Unfortunately, we're in the situation where it did have to get extended, right? But also I, I share your frustrations, you know? I would, like I said, I wish this deal was done last year. I wish this deal, you know, my first goal was to have this deal done by the end of summer. And then it was like, all right, you know, let's have it done by November 5th. Okay, let's have it done before these next new council members come in because that's just going to prolong it, right? And honestly, I can say, our team has been working very hard to get this done and I don't want to, I'm going to throw the city of El Centro under the bus right now. It's their fault. We sent them a, we sent them a counterproposal two weeks ago and we've heard crickets, you know? And so our side is taking this very serious and it's unfortunate that the other side of the table is not.
And El Centro's, you know, talking to UC San Diego all the time and, you know, they, in my opinion, didn't negotiate in good faith because they gave San Diego a new contract in May that gave them an option, a last ride of refusal in buying that hospital.
I assure you that UCSD does not want to buy that hospital. At this point, I wouldn't let them. But unfortunately, that hospital is not for sale. It's not any, something that anybody's going to sneak in and come and try to buy.
You can say that, that El Centro still makes the decision.
Yeah, absolutely, right? So, but, you know.
The other issue is that because we don't have El Centro, there's a lot of decisions that they make that are out of our control. There's even if we, we didn't even have the opportunity to have the input because they don't belong to us. But I feel the same way.
That's what I mean. They're not negotiating, in my opinion, in good faith with you.
So even if, like you said, sir, even if we wanted to have input, we couldn't even give them input. So that's where we're stuck. And we feel, we feel the pain of the citizens of the north and I, I'd be in the same vote, just like Heffernan, their pain, just like you guys are. And to me, I think it's unfair. I think, I think it's unfair. And hopefully, uh, once we get El Centro, we may not even have a tax note. We'll, we'll figure it out. But at that point, once we get El Centro, we're going to be able to share everything and understand exactly where we are and then make some decisions with the input of people at that point.
Or like I said, we're hoping and praying for you that, you know, you're going down the right track and everything's going to work out.
And I'll, I'll tell you from my end, I'm the representative for the El Centro area, but I made it very clear to them from day one that I'm part of the Imperial Valley Healthcare District for the entire county, not just for El Centro. So it's going to be good for everybody, not just El Centro. It doesn't matter.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, there's no incentive codes with healthcare.
That's right.
Do you have any other questions?
This is question and add questions?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can you step up to the podium, please? Sorry.
So since I've been here with the hospital a very long time, we've always had our retirement plan with One America Financial. And it just struck me weird that on the day of the merger, I got an email from One America saying that we're now going to be under Voya Financial, that they're not going to be our representatives anymore. So that's kind of coincidental that it happened on the day of the merge. I don't know, that's, like I said, I have a lot of money invested here, which I'm actually getting ready to pull out because this is very, um, we didn't get, we didn't have a say in here and that's really upsetting. I'm born and raised in the valley, Raleigh. I worked here for over 30 years and, I mean, so you guys, who voted you in? How long are your terms for? Because when we were PMH, we got to vote for our board members and I don't think any of this is fair to Raleigh.
I appreciate your concerns. As far as the benefits going on, honestly, it's the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, I got, I had some other employees got emails about that. And we were never notified and we were switching. That's the first we've heard of it.
Yeah, that's the first we've heard of it. I can promise you, the first PMH item that our board has approved was for the CT scanner.
Yeah.
You know, I would, you know, ask whoever was in charge at that time, but I can assure you that was not our board. Unfortunately, that was a coincidence. I understand, I mean, I understand it, right? I get how, I get how it looks, but I can assure you, I mean, even.
Yeah, okay. And I'll remind folks that you are, the citizens of Raleigh remain voters. You still have a vote. You will have a vote. But Raleigh is intentionally the first community up in 2026 to elect their board members. We did that in order to allow the communities of Raleigh, Collexico and El Centro to have the first crack at voting in their appointed representatives. And the members of this board are appointed pursuant to the legislation, which if, if you're a voter here, you voted for your assemblyman, maybe yours won, maybe he didn't or he didn't. But the elected officials of the state legislature passed AB 918. Not these folks. And then these folks volunteered and have been unpaid for the last year with zero interest in terms of financial or otherwise and have been diligently pursuing the goals of the statute, but since they agreed and took a note to, to, uh, try to accomplish the goals of AB 918. But you are still going to get to vote and you have a representative from the Pioneer's Memorial Healthcare District Board on this board too. So it is just an expansion of the jurisdictional boundaries so that the entire county can now have a vote.
Ma'am, what's your name?
Lourdes.
Lourdes. I, I didn't hear you.
Okay. I didn't say my name, that's all.
Oh, I have a question though. Was that email sent to you or was that like an official PMH mail?
Yeah, an official email, yeah. And when I was talking about, because I work upstairs, one of the other employees was there and she goes, oh yeah, she goes, I just got one too. And it's called Voya Financial, V O Y A.
I think we have that acting.
Yeah, Voya acquired One America. So it wasn't an internal change, they were, they merged.
Okay. I just, I just kind of thought it was, I don't.
You're giving us way too much. If you think we did that, you're giving us way too much credit. And I mean, there is no way, I can't even get this M and A for this hospital. I'm required by law to do it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristi Haridi. I'm one of the per diem physical therapists here at GMH. Been here about 30, 40 years. I grew, Lourdes and I grew up together here. My question is this regarding social security benefits, the contributions that we make. When I became medicarol with the board. When I became Medicare eligible and went to Social Security office to set everything up, I was congratulated by a gentleman saying, you're so fortunate to work at PMH because they always match your social security contributions. They don't do that at El Centro Regional Medical Center. They've never done that. So my sister-in-law, who retired from El Centro Regional as a nurse after many, many years, went through the Medicare issue and it makes a huge difference. I mean, maybe all of you know that already, but it makes a huge difference, our social security contribution total over the years. So those of you who have been here 15 years and have 15 years to go, whatever, until you're 65. So my question is this, would the combination of the two hospitals, would PMH employees stop having the contributions matched? Or because of El Centro has never matched? Or would El Centro Regional employees start to have their social security contributions matched? So that when they become Medicare eligible, the benefits are very different. So that's what's going through my head.
That's, I would say that's something I can't answer right now. But honestly, that's, this is what it's here for, right? To put it, no, thank you for putting it on our radar. That's something, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, as the two entities merge, that we don't know what we don't know. And that's something to be mindful of.
I really appreciate this and for everybody who ever hadn't thought about that, or maybe I'm the one who learned that at the time of my Medicare paperwork and application and all that. Because it really makes a huge difference, the benefits we get when that happens. So all through my years working home health, every agency I worked with, they always matched it. In my income record, always matched social security benefits. So that became a huge plus for me when I got to this point in my life.
A question for you. So is a match for a 401K also available or not?
That, I don't, I don't get those benefits at PMH, I'm PM. I've never gotten any benefits, that's my choice. So maybe somebody else can.
You do?
Yes. It's been a great organization to work with. I wouldn't be here this long if they hadn't been. Absolutely wonderful place to work. That is something now, obviously, like every place, there's no perfection anywhere. But I just wanted to bring that to light and somebody here. I mean, it's something to, I'm just saying, it's something to fight for, to continue having our social security contributions matched. Thank you, PMH. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Can you step up to the podium, please? Or?
I have a few questions. I'm Beverly. I've been here over 36 years. First of all, are you all going to honor our benefits? Like we put in our retirement plan, are you going to take, because they've been matching 5%? Are you going to take that away from us? Because I know when Chris was here the first time, he said that might have to go away.
I can tell you right now, the resolution we just adopted, adopted all of the policies of the Pioneers Board. So what you had in the Pioneers Board, you have under this board. If you're talking about what will happen after a merger with ECRMC, that is to be determined. But currently, there should be no change to your contributions, benefits. All this board did was step into the shoes of the prior board and adopt all the same policies of our line.
Okay, as a new facility, am I going to have to reapply for my position?
Absolutely not.
Okay, then one more thing. And this is my first year as an employee here or my 37 years?
37 years.
Perfect.
Yeah, nobody's going to lose their seniority. Nobody's benefits are changing. You don't have to reapply for your job.
Perfect.
We want to keep every single one of you.
Great.
We're also not looking to take away the identity of the people that have worked here for such a long time or the actual facility itself, the building. There's so much history here, there's a lot of pioneers that thought about, hey, let's get this done and made it happen. The last thing we would ever want to do is take away the identity of what this facility and all the work and everything that everybody's put into. I would hate to do that.
Right, because when prisons came in, we, we had offers to go to work there. State money was beautiful, this, that, and the other. But we knew this was our home. And we did not want it to close. That's why as long-term employees, we love it here. This was our family.
And I love seniority.
Not just seniority, it's we care. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions, please?
Good evening, thank you. I'm Patrick Linder, I'm the chief of medical staff here. I was echoing what Beverly said, that a medical staff is not for, we are not employees. But we work here and, and I was listening to and going through all this. Most of the, it appears to the medical staff as well as the employees that there is an identity crisis going on among us. All of a sudden, you're, you lost all your, what you strive for. I've been working for this hospital for close to about 12 years, 13 years. Prior to that, I was in San Diego for 15 years. And, and I love this place, the people, I love the people. And, and it's, I feel humbled and honored to be serving this community. And we don't want you to take away that feeling. And there is a cultural difference between Pioneer. I worked in El Centro, I'm living against El Centro. It's a great hospital, employees are amazing. I, I'm, they are quite advanced in many ways and I'm happy there. But I look at that because I'm able to help the patients, whether they choose to go there or here. For me, I look purely from that part of view. So I think I just wanted to, the fact that we have been able to continue the best hospital in the valley for a number of years is a reflection of the people and staff that have been working. And I just wanted to share that. And I share everything that Beverly said, all of us are staff. And we're proud of, to be part of this Pioneer. And that's regard also into the general feeling of the medical staff members is that we wanted to keep the medical staff organization independent or separate. If that is something, a little bit, something. So we are doctors, we are friends, we don't fight each other. But at the same time, there is a cultural difference that makes us difficult. And we want to keep that identity separate if possible, if it exists. Thank you, appreciate you sharing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Hello, my name is Adrienne, I work in the clinic settings. I guess my question, some of them have been answered, type of seniority, et cetera. But one of the questions I did want to ask was regarding our women's auxiliary. They have provided a lot for our hospital pioneers and wanted to kind of see where they would stand. I mean, it is the Pioneers Foundation that they support and they've done a lot for the community.
Absolutely, I 100% agree. The foundation and the auxiliary have done tremendous things for the community and for the hospital. And my hope is that they continue doing that, you know? We see no, no reason to interfere with that, so.
And then another question would be, would we be gearing more towards like the pioneer's way of processing policies, clinic, hospitalization? There has been some success within these last years monetary wise. And I think it's doing well and it looks like it can continue if we do the acquisition of El Centro Regional.
I think that's going to be, you know, obviously, when it comes to policies and procedures, you guys are the experts. And you rely on the CEO and his department heads to do that. I'll say personally, like as board member, I'm not here to micromanage and tell you how to do your job because you're the expert, not me. And so I think that's better to, obviously a better question to care toward the department head and the CEO.
Yeah, I mean, when Chris first joined with Pioneers, we started seeing an increase in morale and finances. So I know there's talks about, you know, management teams and things like that. My, I guess my personal opinion would be CEO-driven is kind of a good thing that we've seen improvement for.
No, I appreciate it, you know, the, I wish I had all the questions, but I wish I had all the answers about ECRMC, I really do. I do know that they have a management agreement in place, you know? And like I said, I mean.
Yeah, I totally understand. It's just, as a nurse, I've been in the field for 15 plus years. And sometimes larger management companies, they don't look at nursing or even our small town with the respect that it deserves. So sometimes having somebody that's vested makes all the difference.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And to one of your points about allowing you to work and do your work like Katie was talking about. I know that all of us on this board, we're not going to meddle in any employee's business. That's not our job. Our job is to hold that man accountable right there in the suits, to make sure that they take care of you first. Because if they don't, then we can't take care of the patients and take care of the valley. So we're not going to meddle, we're not going to be coming to your office, say, what are you guys doing and why are you doing this? That's not our job. And no board member should ever do that. Because then you're on pins and needles and you're in the middle of, well, do I listen to a board member or do I listen to the CEO? And that's just bad, bad business. So he gets paid to do his job and we're going to hold him accountable. And he's, he told me that as well. But this entire community can hold all of us accountable as well for not keeping our promises. And thus to provide great healthcare. And I know you guys are committed here.
Yeah, we agree. I think we do try our best. No one's perfect, there's always human error. But the whole point is learning from the mistakes to keep growing.
And I'll share this with you. I used to work for the fire patrol and I worked throughout the entire state, right? And I'm originally from the valley. So I thought, man, we do an awesome job here in the valley. We know, we have all the answers. But then I go work in LA or I work in San Diego or I work in New Orleans and they do business just a little bit different. But it's because of the community, the community concerns are different in every area, right? So I will share this, that if you only worked at PMH, if you've never worked at El Centro, you may find that, oh my gosh, there's, they do things a little bit different. And now we're going to be able to have those conversations between entities and units where you're going to be able to share and say, oh my gosh, you guys actually do, we can tweak the way we do business and improve the entire district. There was a system that I was talking about when I first came on this board. What's that one computer system where you enter the records? No, no, but there's another one that, Epic. I asked about Epic and the answer now was, well, it's really expensive and blah, blah, blah. But you know what? Now that we're one district or we're going to be one district, to me, kind of makes, it's logical that at some point down the road we may go to Epic because we know San Diego uses it, the big metropolitan areas use it, you regional use it. So it's probably even going to be easier for the doctors. Maybe I'm, I'm not even making sense, Dr. Butts.
Well, currently, we have Cerner, we just went live with it within the last year. And that has been a process in itself. I was involved in that training and everything. And it looks like El Centro is recently transitioning as well. So I mean, at least we'll be on the same page, hopefully. Being able to provide continuing healthcare for these patients with the ease of the EMRs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have two different Cerner programs. They don't talk to each other. A lot of it's missing. We bought one set, they got another. So it's not all going to be working.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm George Fareed. I've been here for 34 years. I'm a physician and have been able to work all over the valley. And it's been a real privilege to have had that opportunity, which I look forward to continuing. And Pioneers brought me here 34 years ago. I, I thought I might stay two years. And it was the best decision I've ever made. And I worked in, I have privileges at El Centro Hospital as well as Pioneers. And I've had great experiences there. But you can only do so much. And so continuing on with these, we're primarily here in Raleigh and also in Callexico at our Pioneers Health Clinic there. It's allowed me to see many people and get many perspectives that have made me a better person, a better doctor. And working particularly with the staffs of these two institutions that are, and I have to include in that inner care. And I, I think they have, bring a lot of good things to our health services in the valley. And they have allowed me to oversee HIV services for the valley for 30 years since the pandemic of HIV, or epidemic, I should say. But the main thing I want to do is compliment you all. It's very nice to hear from you all. And I think you're taking in our comments very well. And so we all want to work with you and work with El Centro to really achieve something far better than we've had in the past. But it needs to be done fairly. But thank you very much. I think that's the main point I wanted to make. I've learned from you now and I look forward to additional interactions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Dr. Fareed, I just wanted to say I'm a big fan and I admire your courage that you showed during the pandemic and thank you for helping the community the way you did. Dr. Fareed, down the road, I'd like to have conversations with you, sir. About six months ago, I reached out to the Imperial Valley LGBTQ Center. I think that name's in Maine now. And what my concern was, are there anything specific to that community with regard to healthcare that we could assist them in? And some of the things that Director told me at the time is that a lot of, a lot of the patients would have to go to San Diego over the hill to get certain types of medications, et cetera, et cetera. But I told her that down the road, we'd probably have more conversations whether to make sure that we're taking care of all of our, all of our patients.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We have last call for questions, comments. All right, well, everybody, I just want to thank you for letting us in your house, right? I mean, you know, I, we're the board, but I feel like a stranger in here. I'm in your house, I'm intruding. You guys didn't get a say in how our board got here. You know, I understand your frustrations, your concerns, everything you guys went through. You guys went through the chaos of COVID. And then, you know, that eased and, you know, here comes a merger, right? It goes from, I've been like COVID chaos to merger mess. And I really feel for these employees who have to, yeah. I mean, I, I could never do your jobs. Any questions that you ever have for any of those board members? Feel free to reach out and give me my contact info. They're all, all of our emails are on the websites. I'll say you guys are the experts. And I'm not afraid to hire the smartest people around me to make sure that the organization that I sit on board for and help govern is successful. I think PMH has a lot of the smartest people around me already. And so I just want to say thank you and, you know, hopefully that, you know, we ease some of your concerns. And like I said, I really just want to apologize that we don't have the answers about the merger. I mean, trust me, I wish I had. Yes, yes, yes. So to be determined. And thank you, guys. And if anybody, I'm sorry.
No, go for it. Are you guys able to stand up and introduce yourselves? The only one we're familiar with is Amola.
Oh, perfect. Give a little. That was actually, that was my, actually. And I told, I emailed the board and said, we need to introduce ourselves to everybody. So.
I totally forgot.
Yes. I would say I got nervous and forgot. So don't feel bad about being nervous coming up to the podium. My name's Katie Burnworth. I'm the chair of Imperial Valley Healthcare District. I currently am serving my second term on the Imperial City Council as well. I will say that I advocated for the city of Imperial to have a board appointee on when AB 918 was going on. And then it fell right into my lap and, you know, and so. But also, other than that, my day, I'm an environmental scientist. I'm a program manager and I work just on implementing Solc. And mostly my project focus is on public health and improving air quality. air quality. That's really been my background where I've spent my whole career. Small business owner as well. Mom, I had two kids. Actually, I had one here and one El Centro, because I always say in Imperial, we're sandwiched between the two hospitals. So my little boy was born here and my little girl was born in El Centro. And so, you know, I born and raised in Imperial Valley. Imperial's my home. So, yeah, I'm going to pass it off to my Vice President, Laura Goodsell.
Hi. And I need to stand up or if you can hear me and the people on Zoom, but I am Laura Goodsell. I'm actually here, I'm a lifetime member, community member from Holtville. So I'm on that end. I don't get involved in the Mason Dixon line that runs here. And I think if you were at one of our first meetings, you would have heard me say that the Mason Dixon line is really fun for football, but it has no place in the serious business of healthcare. I am a small business owner in the community of Holtville. In my past years, I actually sat on the school board for the Holtville Unified School District. I've been a chamber, involved with the chamber in business and business development and all of that stuff is kind of where I'm coming from. And I have a vested interest in making sure that we have the best possible healthcare here in the Imperial Valley. I was saying mainly because I had my 92-year-old mother who didn't want to or travel across to San Diego to get care. And recently, we lost her. The Lord decided he needed her more than I did. But it wasn't because she didn't get good care. But I feel like if we team up, we can be even better. We can have the best down here. We don't have to go traveling to San Diego. So I am in it with my heart. And as Katie mentioned, we have been working tirelessly. And I know you have questions about El Centro. And it may be hard to just say, please trust us. But as an insurance agent, I am pretty cynical and I usually like to dot my i's, cross my t's, and trust me, I look at everything. Doesn't mean I always make the right decisions because we're all fallible, but all of us here take this very seriously. And I can guarantee you that I take it very seriously because the people here deserve the best and you deserve to be taken care of in the best way possible. So I don't have any kids. I have fur babies. I'm a cat person. My husband's the current mayor at Holtville. So we kind of are out there in the community my whole life. It's kind of a, a thing. If you knew my dad, Ray Ferris, he was very much into the community and business as well. So, yeah, it's just bred into me. But I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for coming. I mean, it is so nice to see you because you're here because you care. And that sends a really amazing message to me that you care enough to be here on your time at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night. So that shows where your hearts are as well. So thank you so much. Pass it down to Art.
My name is Alfred Proctor. My position is appointed by Imperial County, actually. I also was raised in Holtville after high school in 86. I joined the Marine Corps. I was an infantry squad leader. After that, I went to the High Patrol. I worked for the High Patrol for about 20 and a half years. I retired in 2019 as the commander of the El Centro CHP Office. Aside from my career on the High Patrol, I've also been in a private investigator since 1999. Most of the work I do in that other career is cases dealing with fraud, embezzlements and things like that, looking at contracts and finding just, you know, criminality, if you will. I put my name in the hat. I didn't actually expect to get it, but a lot of, a lot of people that I know in, in a lot of the different communities here in Imperial County said, you know, somebody like you would be great, although you, I know you don't have any healthcare experience. I know you're going to go in it with open eyes and look at things logically, look at things just unbiased, essentially. And it's been a learning experience. In the first meeting, you should have seen me, I was like, wow, I, there is so much. It's overwhelming. Luckily, we had Anola here to kind of guide us and hit me behind the head sometimes. And I have PTSD, Anola. But you know what? We are a great board and we're a board of all of you. And as a public servant for all of my life, I, I still consider us as public servants. And if we're not serving well, then get rid of us. I'll be the first one to go. But I, I, I feel the pain about not knowing about El Centro Regionals. But we're going to hold their feet to the fire as well, the city. I'm talking about the city, because nobody should pay, nobody should pay more than we have, right? That's pretty much it. Oh, I'm, now I also work for my wife. I do whatever she tells me with no money. She gives me an ounce of $41 a month. And I'm the Board Secretary. Thank you.
Hello. My name is James Garcia. I was the last board member to join the board. They had trouble finding somebody in my area, apparently. So I was appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And my district, basically, although I'm here for the entire county, but it's pretty much everything west of Forrester Road all over the country. I live out by Sealy, about three miles outside of Sealy. Born and raised in the valley. And I absolutely love my community. You know, we, you all live here too. So you all heard it from your friends, well, I used to live in the valley. You all used to live in the valley. I love the valley. This is my home. And I currently, I'm a, I'm a real estate broker. I'm a broker owner of Capital Real Estate. And, and so probably the worst thing I'm able to do is talk about myself. This is what I hate to do. So I'm terrible about it. But, but anyhow, I'm always looking for ways to give back to our community. And when this opportunity came about, I thought, what, what better way to give back to our community? If I can be one small little part of enhancing our healthcare in our community and make it better to where I'm with you that feel like, I see it on the real estate side, right? I've seen the builders come down and say, oh, there's no, no real estate talent down here. We got to bring salespeople in from San Diego or wherever. And that would annoy the heck out of me. And, and there's that perception, everything's better in San Diego. Oh, we're in, you know, I'm going to go to my doctor in San Diego or what have you. I'm going to go buy my car in San Diego. And I've always had a bit of a chip on my shoulder about that. And so those of you who, I don't know, what, what you've gone through here and with the insecurity as to how the chip's going to fall here, what's going to happen here, I can't, I can't imagine, right? This is your livelihood and you've put, many of you put many, many years into this. This is your baby. And I completely appreciate that. But hopefully, give this a chance, because for sure, this board and what we want to do is not only provide greater healthcare for the community, we want to create a great culture for the professionals as well. We absolutely appreciate you and really appreciate what you do and what you've given your life to do. I mean, you're the closest thing to angels in this world, right? You save lives. You help people. I mean, I can't think of anything better. If I, if I did better in school, I'd probably be on that side of the, over there with you guys too.
Can't do it in a school board.
I'm also a school board member, Sealy School as well, grade school. If you have any kids close by, great. And so, so that's the main thing. I just want to let you know we're really in it, not just to make a merger, make this happen. We really want to be a part of something together, creating something greater than, than what we currently have, basically. And we want to make this healthcare area, our district, a place where people can be proud of going and feel confident about going to and not feel like it's something that they settled for. Better for worse, right? A lot of that's perception. You don't have to go to San Diego for everything. But we want it to be a choice. You know what? Why not just come to El Centro or Raleigh, Imperial Valley Healthcare District? Just keep it, do, I'll go get, take care of, we're seen in the valley. And, and feel confident about that and not feel like I didn't have a better option. We want this to be a great option for you and a destination versus something that you settle for as a public, right? And, and that's nothing against the professionals. We know you guys are awesome, right? And, and we want to help, and so we want to help the community understand what you bring to the table as well. And, and I think working as a team as a whole in the valley, we're going to really be able to get that one met instead of competitors saying, we're better than you and you're better. And so you get all of that exchange through the different communities. We're all in it together and we can share the same message with the public as how, what kind of great healthcare we can provide you as well. And so we're here for you in that regard also. And, and so I'm just happy to be a part of this and hope to make a contribution towards a greater healthier Imperial Valley.
Good evening. My name is Rodolfo Aldez. And after high school, I joined the US Navy for three years. After that, I worked for the city of Callexico. I retired as a firefighter captain. And then I was elected to the Heffron Memorial Healthcare District in 2016. 2020, I got reelected. Then after that, the board, the Heffron Board selected me to be in the IVHD board. It was a great privilege for them to do that. And like everyone says, we're here to work for you and work with you. And I hope you give us a chance. Thank you.
Okay. Before you all know me, I'm Anola. I've been in medical business for 30 years or so. I started with Dr. Ramon Rodriguez. I'm from Raleigh. Graduated from Raleigh Union High School. My heart is at Pioneers. I'm an advocate for physicians, patients and employees of Pioneers. And as you can see, we all have the same vision and we're here for you. And we will represent you. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
I just thought it was something.
No worries. This, this meeting's for you.
Yes. I'm Dr. Hasting and I'm one of the general surgeons here in Raleigh. I've been here for about a year and a few months. So definitely the most junior. Don't worry about seniority at all, but you know, this staff, there's no doubt that this hospital is very special, as you've already heard. You know, just to let you know, in the past, you know, about eight months or so, I think Carly Zamora and Carly Loper did a fantastic job about keeping us up to date all the time, extremely transparent, which I think everyone was extremely grateful for, especially myself. But my question is, how long are you waiting to wait on an answer from El Centro? Or like, is it going to be something that's prolonged and dry-stone for years?
No.
Or what is the deadline, really?
You know, I've been, our attorney's laughing because she's been telling us that we need to do that for a long time and I haven't. I mean, I, they don't have much, they don't have much longer. And if we're into this by the summer, that means IVHD has walked away. If we're into this in the spring, if we're not, I mean, we need to get an escrow now, you know?
So then is there any point in waiting for them to give us an answer before moving forward with, you know, making policy and plans and whatnot? Or is it, we're going to start making policy and plan and then they're going to join in and they're going to have to adopt that policy and plan?
Right.
Right? So there's no point in waiting and working retrospectively when you can be, you know, proactive and.
No, absolutely. You know, I think I've actually already had these conversations with our CEO about that. Like, hey, if there's a policy we have to change, I don't want these employees to have to adapt twice. You know, if this merger's going to go through, you know, I expect you to work with our CEO, Pablo, and make sure it's a policy that works for both, right? Understanding that policies and procedures for both facilities be a little bit different based on the tools that you have. But yeah, I've already made that clear. And he just, I don't know when we have a drop dead date, but it's coming and. And if and when the board decides on a deadline date by which to conclude negotiations, it'll be made public. Yeah. All right. Thank you. I wish I had.
Evening. My name's John Grass. I'm President of the Imperial Valley Coalition, State of Health Care Facilities and also on the Pioneers Royal Hospital Foundation. Just want to encourage you and thank you for all your hard work. What an amazing, difficult task it is that you were handed to try to figure out and still trying to figure out. And it's, it's a lot of work and I recognize that. My background is in behavioral health and recognize that in your, in this profession and running a hospital and in healthcare, you have to deal with grief. And I think that in a community setting, that's what you're dealing with here. You're dealing with the loss of a legacy, a loss of an entity that people poured their heart and soul, their, their time, talent and treasure into. And so I think it's important that you recognize that for some in the community feels like it's something's being ripped away, taken from them. And that doesn't set well. But I encourage you to build a relationship with this community, to fall in love with Raleigh, to build that relationship where they are in love with you, that you represent their interests, that you're taking care of their legacy and you're taking good care of it. We have an annual, as a foundation, we have an annual fundraiser called the Gala. And the community comes out in a large way financially to support the hospital. This last, recently, we gave $333,000 to the hospital for material support, equipment, supplies, infrastructure. And we want to continue to do that. But I'm concerned that with a community that feels like something's been taken away, that they will not feel as inclined to give. It's important that the community feel that the hospital is, is there for them to support, to continue to give. And that's a real dedication. That's a real story that tells them, tells you guys that they're with you and they want to continue to be with you, to continue to be with this hospital, support it in a material way so that they, they get behind it and they support it. So I'm just, I just want to encourage you guys that, that the work going forward is to build a relationship, not only with the employees of the hospital and the providers of the hospital, but the community members that have supported this community, this hospital for so many years. Just an invitation to do that. Just be thinking about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just make a comment about that while they come to the podium. The legacy is something we've actually talked about. Just to let you know, we want, we do want to preserve a legacy, the legacy. And, and we're mindful of that. Just want to let you know, we're mindful of that, absolutely.
Mr. Grass, would you object to having a link on our website to the foundation? To your foundation?
Well, we haven't talked about it, but it makes sense.
I mean, I, I've heard a lot of questions about the foundation as well. And, you know, is the foundation going to exist? Are you guys going to pull it away from them? And my question, my answer was always, absolutely not. I hope it continues. I hope that the foundation continues to support Pioneers Hospital. And even if we merge in the Pioneers Royal or the Hospital Foundation, once they continue just supporting the Pioneers Hospital, that's okay, because that's what your community's for. You know, I, I've never, I see it as a great asset and I see it, I see the community pour their heart into it. And so, absolutely. You know, I don't, you don't see us ripping down signs or telling employees they can't wear their Pioneers flag. You know, that's, that's not what we're here for. That's not how you build community and it's not what you trust.
Good evening. I'm to sit on the board of the foundation and will be the new incoming president in the spring. And a lot of the work that we do for the foundation is thanks to the employees' payroll deductions that support us. Many, if not all of them in here do. That's the kind of support that this.
That's the kind of support that this hospital has. Not only the community, our Gala has raised, well, before COVID, in one fundraiser, we raised $108,000. Just incredible. And I'm hoping we do it again this year. I would invite every one of you to come and support us. The other issue could be by changing the name of the hospital down the road, all the bylaws have to be changed. And I'm not sure that the foundation could continue through that. Our monies, it's in the bylaws. Every penny we raise will stay in this property to offset when we leave to the road, period. Like John said, we just made a huge $333,000 contribution in four or five departments. Pretty incredible for a small, underprivileged community. I do buying for the gift shop. I've helped run the gift shop for 45 years. This place is near and dear to my heart. We hung tough through COVID. We are a place that the employees, when they're having a rough day, they come in, they smell the candles, they eat a candy bar, and they leave with a little more pep in their step. We love to be there for them. So I would invite you all to come in. Our hours are at 10:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, and help support what we do. If you have time, at any time, down the hall by the gift shop, between the gift shop and the cafeteria, there are posters that list all of the contributions we have made to the hospital. And Nola's seen them, it's pretty impressive. And we today only have maybe 20 app different memories. Second, that too, the name change would be very detrimental in how, through our bylaws and how it's changed. And we really don't want to spend the legal money to redo the bylaws. So this could change the way these two main fundraisers work for the hospital. And last thing I'll tell you, there was something in the back of the shop that we pulled out on Tuesday. It is a poster, an old school poster, calligraphy, explaining this woman's dream. And the letter was written in 1957. And it's, it's pretty amazing. It really is. And in that first year, they donated $27,000. In 1957, that's a lot of money. So when people say everything, you know, there's history here. Yeah, there's a lot of history that can't be forgotten. And I hope you all keep that in your mind and in your hearts for this community.
Mrs. Smith, I was going to say, one of the things that I've thought about and I've actually talked with my board about is having the foundation, you know, help us guide how you want us to preserve the history. You know, we have no, this will be forever, Pioneers Memorial Hospital. You know, even though it's Imperial Valley Healthcare District that serves the entire county, this will be Pioneers Memorial Hospital. Because let's be real here, even if we did change the name, everybody's still going to call it Pioneers. So you might as well leave it the same anyways, you know? I mean, yeah, so I would love to work with the foundation to preserve the history, to really let the board understand what the foundation does. I would hope that Gala and all the fundraisers continue. I think that's a very admirable and amazing thing you do for this hospital, as well as the gift shop and with the women's auxiliary. And feel free, I mean, I would love to meet and have a conversation with you so we can talk about how you guys want to preserve the history moving forward.
Sure. The foundation meets the first Wednesday of every month in this room at 7:30 a.m. I know it's a god-awful time, but that's how it's been for as long as I've been on the board. But it's, it's there to get people, maybe they're only going to be 20 minutes late to a, we're usually done by 8:00 o'clock, so they're not, you know, it's not that.
7:30?
7:30, uh-huh, first Wednesday.
8:00.
Okay.
It's like 7:30 p.m.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
I just want to point out too, so when I came here, Karen is just amazing. Like she's always smiling in the hospital when you go out there. You walk into the gift shop, she's always got a smile on her face. She was very welcoming to me when I came in. And like you can tell from the beginning, like I knew that she, her heart was in what she was doing here. And yeah, she's part of the foundation, she's on the auxiliary, she's always here. We found a newspaper article in like 1990, she still looks the same. So like, and she's always smiling. And so there's no better representation of the foundation or the auxiliary than Karen right here.
Thank you. This hospital has saved my youngest daughter's life, life once, as a, as matic. And how do you give back to something except to give your time, energy, and heart? Absolutely. Thank you.
Do I have anybody else? I'm really going to adjourn this.
I just want to remind, before I adjourn, just to remind the public and the board that there's another special board meeting away from today, 6:00 p.m., to address business matters for the hospital.
Yes, for business matters. It was really important for our board to have, you know, telling our legal, hey, usually you don't do Q and A with the public and the staff, but figure it out how to make it, you know, legal within the Brown Act because it was really important to us. Yeah, I mean, we look forward, I look forward to getting to know you guys and getting to know how your hospital operations run, you know, and any feedback as board members. I mean, you guys are the experts, so. With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:40 p.m. until our next special meeting on January 30th. 30th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.